Paulie?
Here.
Mr.?
Here.
Rod?
Here.
Wisdom?
Here.
Ferguson?
Here.
Ratcliffe?
Foraker?
Here.
Clayton?
The United States of America and the two hundred and forty states, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The report, all I got is we're still waiting on contract on the Riverway Theater to bring it up. City administrator's report?
Yeah, there's a couple of updates. We did send out actually this morning a fireworks kind of notice for the public, letting everyone know the guidance on fireworks are allowed between June 25th to July 7th. You cannot light them off in any public properties or on the parks. There are no time restrictions. However, do complement the nuisance ordinance, so we ask everybody do what they can to be neighborly during this timeframe. As far as projects going, Watts Electric is back on site, so started the underground work. They'll be beginning boring down by the city park, Dallas Jones Park, up through the residential areas, and then they'll start with the downtown work, or moving north to the downtown area. So you'll see them back on site and those crews running around. Constructors got finished with the asphalt work, besides a couple of little minor spots that need some repairs. Once their asphalt plan on 73 is fired back up to do a little bit of work, they'll come back and fix those few spots. There are concrete crews in town now to do some of our curb lines and work that was also part of that project. They decided to do that after the asphalt overlay work, just with timing. They were going to do it beforehand, but they pulled that back. It'll be, you'll see them down on, still on West 14th Street doing a few curb lines, immense ADA cycle components down there. We have, they did get the asphalt done on the court at Dallas Jones, so that's all completed. We've got hoops and nets ordered, so that'll be getting installed. We did get a quote for lighting that's around $13,000 to get that done, so we'll be looking to toss that into the next fiscal budget unless we have any donors or if we solicit any donors for that to peace. So if somebody knows anybody who wants to donate or a foundation wants to donate for some lighting on the course or on the court, let us know. That's all I got.
Keith?
I don't have anything.
Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda. We got minutes approval for June 3rd, agenda approval, claims approved for May 25th, 24 to June 7th, 2024. Traders' report, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Vote.
Those are second forker, written to. Six yeas?
Old business, discussion and action, resolution authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding with Richardson County for a transfer of 911 call codes to a secondary public safety answering point.
Well, I thought we were going to have county representation here for this item. We do not. Baker, do you want to speak on any of it before I do, or?
It's the same thing.
Yeah. Pretty, pretty much.
Has, has the county signed on already?
I don't know if they got it signed. They moved some meetings around. I had submitted to Sam Shidol. She went through it all, had a few things that we addressed within the, within the call procedures. We had pieces in there where there weren't replicating or replicated calls, duplicates going to them saying, we'll just do it on our essential discretion. County wanted all calls to go to them whether or not they're really relevant to the component or not, so we're best, the plan we put into place that essentially we will transfer everything and all the repeat 911s if they're specific for them in that case. But this was talking about, you know, pocket dials, you know, someone, both the accident pocket dials or dispatchers or have to track that down. So they're calling that number back till they can receive somebody or sending somebody to that location at that point in time. So we would keep pushing those over to, over to the county.
So this resolution's been sent to the county for their approval last week?
The memorandum of, of understanding.
Yeah, MOU, okay. But it didn't come back signed from the county?
I did not have anything back from them, no.
I think, I know it was on their agenda last week.
Was it?
I heard it. I didn't hear what happened.
Nobody reached out to me with a signed one.
So is there some nothing, Ferguson, since they're not here?
It can, it can remain on there till they show up. August 1st is really the start date for this. They do have to get to the Public Service Commission with this, with an agreement to go through the next stages and finish what they would need to get done.
Who would we be looking to have our, our expectation from the county as one of commissioners?
Or even sheriff?
Uh, it was going to be the sheriff and then his head dispatcher, Ashley, Ashley, I think, were the ones that were handed it in.
I can just lay the table until someone can come in and talk to us.
Well, either that or they can just sign the MOU. They don't really have to be here, as long as they like the wording that the verbiage that we give them. Has this gone back? What's that?
They told us they liked it yet.
Besides what I've got from Sam, Sam had no issues with what we have right here.
But it'd be better if we approved a signed copy rather than?
Right.
Yes.
Prove it.
Or are they waiting for us, for them to approve a signed copy from us?
No. When they said, I said this to them, they were gonna, last night they were taking to their repasses.
Well, you, see, this was on the agenda two weeks ago, and there was somebody here, so it was sent. And they, at the time, you told us that they had some questions, or, and then I know in the last two weeks, Chief Baker and, and RC Ackerman have come back and forth with it. So now it's here, but we're not for sure if the county's. There we go.
Last conversation I had with them.
We started talking about this in May.
Yeah. Last conversation I had with them was they submitted through, there was pieces Sam needed fixed. We addressed those. We sent it to them. They were going to be here 17 to talk the next components out.
I'll make a motion.
Seventeenth, I say.
I'll make a motion to table the matter until the next meeting.
Second.
Vote.
First, second from Wisdom. All right, so the postponement to the next meeting. All right, six yeas?
Move on to regular business and public hearing. Consideration for a zoning text amendment to allow for firearms and ammunition sales used by permitting in a residential commercial flex zone. Isaac Knight.
All right, so we'll see, open the hearing up, 6:08.
Evening, everyone. My name's Isaac Knight. A petition to have the zoning text submitted so I could conduct a firearms restoration and gun spitting business out of my home on 2404 Harling. And it is currently a zone commercial flex, but my understanding is that the firearm sales is not permitted per zoning text. So this is to have an amendment to our zoning guidelines to allow for firearms in ammunition sales. My primary form of business will be firearms restorations, gun spitting, cleaning, refinishing. But for me to be able to conduct that business, the ATF says I have to have a federal firearms license, which is an FFL. And to get that, I have to have this zoning approval.
We've not received, it went for public hearing with planning commission. Obviously, planning commission made recommendations to bring it to council. We have not had any filed complaints or anything from anybody. This is their, their opportunity to, to talk about it if they want to.
And outside of your home, that's, I mean, are there certain area designated for this? Is it going to be like a storefront type? Like, what's kind of the general workflow?
So work will be conducted out of my home. I have a home workshop. Since it'll be restorations and repairs, I will be conducting those out of my home. It'll be as a, as a basis and my appointment. So people who are needing that, the repairs done, they'll contact me and I will conduct those out of my home.
So quickly to clarify it, you're not approving a conditional permit at this point in time. You're, you're looking at approving a zoning text amendment to allow a commercial flex zone to have a conditional permit process. Right now, there's no process available within a commercial flex zone. It's not permitted at this point in time. So as Isaac has done, he asked for a conditional permit, which was denied because it wasn't even available. He went the path to see how that could be done, which is through a text amendment. So he would still have to file a conditional permit application if this was to pass and go through the whole notification of the neighbors and, and all the surrounding areas. Little different than our, our normal, so that's why I make sure everyone does what we're, what we're doing.
Now, on this here, with the school zone, is there a certain boundary line you're supposed to be so far from the school zone? Because I think when I got mine, I was far enough away from Sacred Heart. Is this concerning this?
Uh, so I have had my meeting with the ATF. Per their stipulations and guidelines, any firearm that's leaving my residence or the place of business has to have a trigger guard lock on them or a slide lock. That is their only stipulation. There is no distance or footage requirement that they have.
So you do have one other constructor's gun shop, which has been down on South Harling. It's in a residential commercial flex. Essentially grandfathered in because it was, it was there before the zoning ordinance went into place. So you do have one that's operating in that, in a residential commercial flex right now also.
I, I feel like you, you've done your research and are going through the proper steps, so I'm making a motion to approve.
I think we're still. We're still in here.
But yeah.
But I have to come out in public. We have quick room, but thank you very much.
Any other comments? None.
Six, 12 PM. Six thirteen.
Number two, discussion and action. Amendment article five zoning districts, land use categories, and zoning matrix to allow the conditional permitting use type firearms and ammunition sales in residential commercial flex zone as recommended by the planning commission.
Bye.
All vote?
Six yeas?
Number three, discussion and action. Authorization to open a new checking account tied revitalization rule Nebraska grant fund.
All right, briefly talked about this at the last council meeting. We applied for grants through NDE or NDEQ for demolition. The grants operate slightly different. They don't want any co-mingling, co-mingling of the funds, since they actually front this grant. It's not a reimbursement grant, so they want a separate checking account. We, there is a match component which we have, and we can put our match money into this account, but we can't put their money into our match account according to state what its operator.
You just dropped a bunch of checking accounts.
Yes. Yes. So we would actually, you'd open the accounts. The EQ would then front the $17,000 grant. We do the process through the grant piece. Then essentially it'll be a zero balance. I did talk with Frontier about opening the account there, whether or not that can remain a zero balance, because we likely, if we apply for the grant again, will need it next year. So they said, that'd be fine. We can pretty much just go through, put it in a dormant state, and then keep it active for that requirement of the grant. So, though we do need an approval to open it up.
Motion to approve.
Vote.
Six yeas?
Number four, discussion and action. Appointment of Steve Obrady to the Falls City Airport Authority for a term ending calendar year 2024 as recommended by Mayor Hartman.
Motion to approve. All vote?
Six yeas?
Number five, discussion and action. Request for a special designated liquor license for a gear garden within the parking lot of 14th and 17th Stone Street on July 5th, 2024, Falls City.
Same stuff, different year.
Second.
All right. Hold your foraker that one.
All vote?
Six yeas?
Six, discussion and action. Recommendation of award of change orders for projects number R2A 014 and R2A 020 of the 2020 owner occupied rehabilitation program as recommended by the housing.
So these are the last two for our 2020 owner occupied rehab project. They had a little bit of change left over in that grant, so they had work within a couple of existing projects that were put on the wayside and not rewarded. So this will award those last two components and fully obligate that grant, which is actually to be fully expended here by August 1st, I believe. So they're on track to get that done. They're waiting for a release of this work with the contractor to get on site, and then they'd add these onto those two work orders, so those two projects. Housing Board reviewed it and recommend, recommend an approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
All vote?
Six yeas?
Seven, discussion and action. Resolution authorizing the city to access unpaid vacant properties restrictions fees totaling $750 for the property located 1120 Lane Street, also known as lots 21 and 22, block 157.
Um, this will be, I guess, a new component. So this is our first round of vacant properties where we have, where people have not paid those SS fees. So they've met the vacant property ordinance. They've either registered them or they did not correspond to get it, so they got registered by the city directly. They went through the first couple of phases, so this case, this one had the initial fee was $0. The first six month fee is $250, and they went another six months, and that goes into $500. It continues to be $500 throughout the life of that house, or as long as it's registered there. What our authority is, is they don't pay those fees, is then go clean the property, actually file it on the, on the deed. So if property were to get sold, we can attain those fees at some point in time, hopefully at some, some point in time. If they just sit there long enough, then it'll be higher than the value of the property, and we can essentially kind of put the difficult foreclose on it and just process the, through the abatement program. So each, each property that we have will have its own resolution coming before council, so that's why you don't see a list of them. This is the first one we'll do, and we'll have probably monthly, you know, two or three coming on to, on to these agendas. I tried to see if we could get them to be one resolution, but Dunn's office did not want it that way, just due to legal proceedings and how they, how they handle those, so. So Dunn's office has drafted this up for us, or drafted us up a template to work with. This gives us the authority, or be the authority, city administrator, to then, or a city clerk really, to go actually file the lien and do the next steps. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Vote.
Six yeas?
A discussion and action request to block off 17th Street between Harlow Street and Lane Street from 5 to 11 PM on June 28th, 2024 for the community fireworks display event, United Methodist Church.
All right, so we have the request. I think they've done this each year. I don't know. Kim, do you want to come up and talk about it a little?
Yes, this is a yearly request.
Motion to approve.
All vote?
Six yeas?
Thank you.
May I ask one question? Because whose responsibility is it to notify the street department?
I'll be approved.
You'll do it. Okay, okay. Thanks, Anthony.
Yep, I wear a lot of hats.
God, such a, a lot.
That's a lot of work.
Tell those guys to bring those barricades up.
Discussion and action. Request to block off 7th Street between Harlow Street and Stone Street from 5 PM to 11:59 PM on June 29th for the American Legion fireworks event. Stephen Lankel.
This is the first year that we've done this, and we plan to make it a yearly down there. And after thinking about it, I think maybe if we could go up to Stone, 28. I know I've got the fire department on board. They're going to be down there. I would assume they'd like to park on Stone Street. So we just would like to get the roads locked off, make it safer for the fireworks. We're going to be doing them in, I believe it's Devon Moore's and Bob Whitslaw that are the old parking lot of the Legion Houston. And that's where we're planning on lighting everything off at. And I've talked to all the neighbors, Metzgers and Hamilton's and everybody's all right with it, so. There'd be a lot of help if we could block it off, so we wouldn't have the Harland traffic coming around.
We'd add the 700 block of Stone.
Think we could, yeah.
Right. And then just keep with 7th Street also.
They haven't, McQueen and Bear and the guys, they haven't told me where they'd like to park their truck yet, but I would assume right there on Stone would be my guess.
Yeah. We can, I'm sure we can.
But I was down, I was down there meeting last Monday, and they've all voted on it. They're not going to be down there as well.
And they'll probably need some barricades up.
Double my workload, all right.
Motion to approve. All vote?
Number ten.
Six yeas, sorry.
Sorry. Discussion and action. Resolution declaring certain city properties surplus and authorization disposition of surplus properties.
All right. There was a, included a list, so every year we typically do a surplus property, go through with just components that we have laying around, equipment that is beyond its life, we no longer use it to essentially do disposition on them. Ideally, we'll go through sale first, so we have been using municipal bid for that, which is just a format for us to put it in. We don't have to pay any commission fees or anything like that. The, the commission fees are paid directly through whoever makes the purchase to municipal bid, and then they just simply come and pay us for that. So we just use that entity to do those components. We put them all on there, would be the initial plan. Everything that's in this list, unless we wanted to transfer between, but we don't really have any, any of these are worth a transfer anywhere to another entity. Whatever would not sell within that point, be disposed of for salvage or salvage or just disposed of, essentially. And that's how the, how the resolution is written, just like the other, the other years. So that's the list we got right now.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Vote.
Six yeas?
Number eleven, discussion and action. Renewal of employee health insurance plan.
I'm getting all nervous for six, six and oh and everything. Did you happen to get the?
Yes, they all.
Well, I am Dan Durn of Benefit Management, been there a few times now, but we're coming up on the renewal for August 1st. We had a meeting with the insurance committee, maybe two weeks ago. Went over all the options, and as you have in front of you, I guess the first thing I'd like to go through is the very first page, the introduction, that is the current rates. There are three different plans that we have with the city. The first one is what we would call a traditional medical plan. Has a deductible, but then it also has offices and copays and prescription cards. And then the two additional plans are HSA plans, and there are just a little difference between them. We really feel it's important to give your employees options when it comes to their, their healthcare and what they can pick up as far as coverage. So we did a pretty good job of educating employees on these plans and let them make their decisions. Renewal, well, let me back up. This is the third year that we've been with Medica. The first, first renewal was 6.05. If you flip it over, this one's coming in at 8.30. I know it sounds like a big number, but looking back over history, when we left Blue Cross Blue Shield, the rate was 1,000 for single on that first plan. So it's a pretty big rate reduction that we saw the first year slowly going up. One of the things I told the committee about Medica is they are very transparent with their, their renewals. They don't really play the game that some carriers do, and that is, we give you an increase, come back and talk to us, and we'll reduce it. They really say, this is what we need, and they're really not going to budge off. But as you'll see, with the rest of this, there's only really one carrier who came in, and that's going to be on your page three, which is the bottom, right? You can see page three, and that is United Healthcare. United Healthcare is the outlier of this. They're coming in with a 13% reduction, whereas Blue Cross is coming in, they have two or three different products, and they're coming in 40% higher. So committee really felt that this is, well, one, we were with United Healthcare, it was a debacle. It messed a lot of employees with problems with claims and everything else. So the committee just really didn't feel that that would be a very viable option. So committee recommended that we go back with, or stay with Medica one more year. On the condition, there was some complaints from the committee about specifically chiropractic services being paid. We charged the, the committee to find out from their participants or the employees of any complaints, and as of today, I've gotten, so I don't know. You know, I know one person who had problems with chiropractor, and I thought we worked through those, but I'm still waiting for that person to respond to me, so we can look at it again, see what kind of issues they have. On the side note, the nice thing about Medica that no other carrier does in Nebraska is they have a list of all these routine prescriptions that people take, such as your high, high blood pressure, cholesterol, even diabetic devices and insulin. That saved the city employees over $80,000 this last year, so it's definitely working. I, I know if we made a move to United Healthcare, we'd probably get a big pullback for that one reason. And then second, the United Healthcare does a lot more of what we call maintenance or maintaining step therapy, or you got a shoulder problem, the doc's saying you need MRI, then they say, go get physical therapy first. As far as Medica and Blue Cross and some of these other carriers really don't do that, so. Again, it's not ideal. Healthcare is going up. There's obviously some conditions that your group has. We don't know what those are without doing a real health history of the employees, but my guess is we're probably got a couple of very high prescription drug usage. Anything you see on TV, you're going to spend $5 a month, maybe $10 a month. So any of those advertisements are to get you in, and they're just really going to suck at two of these plans, so. Not much we can do about it. Doctor's saying they should be.
The Blue Cross that we looked at, which we were on before, is what, 45% recurring, 48%.
Yeah, no, there's some, you know, when you look at it, you, all you looked at was single rates. You go and say, let's go to Blue Cross, but it's really those dependence when, when they're really jacking up the rates on them. So, you know, we got to look at the overall cost of the city, and again, we can maybe lower some of the employee costs, but that's probably out the element of range.
So the city still has its normal commitment for the HSA components. I think it's on the family plan, it's like $4,000 on top of their salary added to the HSA. Single person gets $2,500. I think there's a 3500 or something between that, too. So, so it does provide this. Part of our benefits is to try to cover, you know, a component of that deductible piece.
Yeah, and the whole theory is trying to keep the, between the rates and when you have savings and HSA premiums, for example, that's where the city's taking some of that. So it's almost a neutralized premium between what they pay in premiums, HSA plus, plus premiums on the HSA, so. So it really works well. I think employees enjoy, they, they really like that aspect of the HSA. As you can see by the, the usage, I mean, we have, it's like sixteen that are on the traditional plan and the rest of the employees are on the HSA.
The chiropractor piece isn't that big deal. It's typically needs to kind of like a referral from a doctor, from what I understand.
Well, some of the, some of the, you know, what, what happens, you have what we call preferred providers, where these organizations, doctors, offices and such, sign up with an agreement with Medica, Blue Cross, whoever, and they, they accept their, their, their allowances. So whatever they're charging, that's what, what Medica agrees to. Some of the chiropractors are outside that, they may have some disputes with what Medica is willing to pay. Doesn't mean it's not covered. It just means that the employee has to pay the bill, take the bill, and Medica can get reimbursed. So again, that's something that they want for, when a person says, well, they're not going to pay for it, that they don't, it's not covered by the insurance company. It is, it just needs to be sent in as a part. But we're going to work on that. And we, the committee basically said, we don't see, if we got a lot of complaints, we can't get them fixed. We will look again at the first year and say, okay, maybe make some sense to make a change. That way deductibles line up because they're all calendar year deductibles. So if we did make a move back to Blue Cross, for example, the new deductibles with Blue Cross will begin August first, but anybody that's already had some claims throughout the year would be credited, but that usually takes sixty or ninety days, simply because Blue Cross doesn't get the information from Medica, you know, for sixty, ninety days. And their, a claim could actually happen on the end of, in July and not be in the system until thirty or sixty days. Again, we'll look at that again and evolve, assuming these complaints still have come and we can't get that resolved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vote.
Six yeas?
That's the end of the agenda meeting.